The Creator of Heaven and Earth, the Land and the Sea, everything that is in them, who gives us the breath of life. Lord, we come before you humbly to implore you tonight, Lord, to be a part of this meeting. And, Lord, as the great poet-king instructed us, that we should come before your presence with thanksgiving. And we do so thanking you, Lord, for these public servants, Lord, from those who serve here on the council, the mayor, the city manager, and, Lord, each of the department heads that are here tonight, and all of the staff, Lord, that served this city and this community. We thank you for them, Lord, for the wisdom, for the experience that they have, that they bring to the table, the energy that they bring. We're grateful for what you have done for us, the bounty that you have brought, the businesses that you have brought in. And so, Lord, as your businesses consider tonight, as the citizens, Lord, are here and they are being represented, I thank you, Lord, for each of them, and your heart for them. And we ask that you would give direction. You said that even though that we have human wisdom, that sometimes we need something beyond that. And so, Lord, that's what we ask you for. And we pray for your bounty, and we pray for your favor over the city. Lord, that you continue to direct, that you continue to... Lord, just let us see your goodness, and that your blessing will be on this council, on this meeting. We look to you, Lord, not only as a part of this nation, we feel blessed to be here, but, Lord, we feel blessed to be a part of this community. And may we see your smile, and may we enjoy your blessing. We ask it in the name of your Son. Amen.
Amen. Face the flag, hand over heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Pastor Toker, thank you. Item number three is a roll call. Ms. Prossipka.
Here.
Mr. Steins.
Here.
Mr. Best.
Here.
Mr. Flores.
Here.
Mr. Wood.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
All members are present. Item number four is a consent agenda. A, approval of the minutes of the regular session of June 4th, 2015, and B, approval of preliminary plat for the Glen Urban subdivision, and you did recommend approval, Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
Moved to approve consent agenda items A and B.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve consent agenda items number A and B. Any discussion? If none proceeded, the vote is in favor, the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, the same sign. Agenda adopted. Item number five is citizens' comments. If you're a citizen or a taxpayer to the city, you may speak at this time. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Know that council and staff may not comment. Last call. All right, we're moving on. Item number six is presentation of the Texas Municipal Retirement System, TMRS update. Mr. Rodriguez.
Mayor, this is an annual report. We asked Mr. Rodriguez, our representative, to come give the council an annual report on our retirement system, and we thank David for being here this evening. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Let me see, make sure which way is the slide go? This way? I don't know, can't tell. I'm usually very Tex-avy anyway. This is pretty fancy. You guys are doing well here.
Police seizure funds, David.
No, don't tell me that. Don't tell me that's working out.
Good getting this, because now that y'all can see.
That's even better. Well, good evening, council. I want to give a quick little update on the system. Bruce and I have talked quite a bit. I've known him for a long time. As a city manager of multiple cities, I would just want to give you all a quick little update on the system, what's going on with TMRS. I don't want to take too much of your time. You have quite a few things on your agenda. And then again, if you have any questions after I'm done, you know, ask away, or raise your hand, and we'll talk about it. Real quickly about the participants, we're still a little bit larger than we were last year. We have more cities joining the system. Our membership has stayed pretty consistent, about 103,000. Our annuitant base is growing. I think I talked about this last year. We have a lot of people eligible to retire in this state, and that's all across the state. We have a lot of baby boomers retiring, so our annuitant numbers will keep growing. The plan design is still the same. Our cities determine the plan structure. Design structure is still the same in place. Each individual city stands on their own. They determine the plan structure. So Pleasanton's plan structure is strictly unique of what the city provides their employees. We have some pretty basic funding basics. The basic funding basics are pretty different than other pension plans. We're considered more a cash balance plan. And what I mean by that is, in a longer employee works for you, the more money they put into this retirement system, the more they get in retirement. That is key, longevity. Those employees you keep on the payroll that put that service in, that's what really bases on the retirement benefit. We're not like other plans out there, which are called defined benefits, like the teachers' retirement system in the state. Our funding policy stays very, very strong. We have an excellent investment policy in place, actuarial methodology in place for our cities to fund the benefit. It has increased a little over to 86%. Our assets keep growing. We're over $24 billion now, and we're predicted to grow almost a billion dollars a year. And there's a reason for that. People keep moving to Texas. The economy is strong here in this state. We have so much growth all across the metroplex, the valley out here in this area. It's just growth. Growth is happening all across the state. We've made a lot of term, long-term funding policies to ensure these benefits. And I think I talked about this a little bit last year, from 2007 down to our recent changes this past year. All of these changes were made to ensure funding is in place for our membership and retirees. Our last year, we made some changes to our actuarial methodology to ensure that funding. The mortality changes we implemented are called generational mortality tables. That ensured the retirees that are living longer are provided that benefit through the rest of their life. These generational mortality tables are coming. We've heard other entities are looking at these, and one of the biggest entities out there is Social Security. I don't know if you heard things about Social Security, whatever it might be, but the adoption of these mortality tables are coming. I've always talked about how the pension makes dollars and cents. If you look at the pension plan, how it works, these plan benefits are determined by our cities. They're portable. Each one of these entities stands on their own. And it's unique about our system, we're really a confederation of pension plans. We have 862 entities. We don't commingle the assets. We don't take pension from Pleasanton and pay for somebody's benefit in San Antonio or Jordanton. Each entity stands on their own. But they're portable across plans. Why do I say that? If you recruit employee from another city, from San Antonio, for example, and they leave their money in the plan there in San Antonio, it's portable across to Pleasanton. But you're not matching the service or money they contributed in San Antonio. You're only matching the service here. But we bridge those years. So if you had somebody work 10 years in San Antonio and 10 years here, they had 20 years in the plan. Does that make sense to everybody? And that what makes our system very, very unique. The plan itself continues to have a very competitive edge, and I talked about this a little bit. Separate entities are funded in assets and liabilities. And the key about our pension plan is these assets continue to grow. We have sound methodology in place to ensure those liabilities continue to decrease every, every year. And I think you know this as a city, you have a line item piece in your budget where you fund this pension from day one of employment. But that employee never, ever, ever touches that city money until they retire. That is key. They have to retire to receive the benefit. Pension is the key right now, and we hear a lot of things talked about pension, what's going on with retirement benefits. I've always felt pension, that you provide your employees is part of the three-legged stool in retirement. I don't know if anybody's ever heard about this. I might have talked about this a little bit last year. The first piece you provide your employees is what they have, what they're working for you through TMRS. The second leg is any type of Social Security benefit they might have, or might receive, whenever they might receive it. And the third leg is any type of personal savings that employee has. You have a key benefit here for your employees. They work here full career. They make it here a full career. They're going to have a very good benefit for the rest of their life. That is key to an employee working for a city. Pension plans are being looked at. I don't know if you hear it in the news. I'm going to talk real quickly about this. This past year, a city in Michigan declared bankrupt, actually declared bankruptcy. Did everybody hear about this? City of Detroit. And one of the biggest issues with Detroit was the pension liabilities, the pension cost. We heard this. A lot of plans across the nation are looking at making changes. We hear of this from New Jersey to New York to Louisiana to Oklahoma to Ohio. All of these plans are being looked at and modified. We keep track of this as a system. We don't want these other issues out there on the federal level, or even on the state level, affecting us. There's a lot of scrutiny that these plans have to be well-funded. We have the policies in place. One of the biggest changes we made were the investment policy. We started diversifying our investments back in 2008 to bring our higher interest rate of return. We're continuing to diversify the portfolio. It's a very large portfolio of $24 billion right now, growing a billion a year. This is an ongoing process for us. We're going to continue this, and there's a reason why we want to diversify this portfolio, because we want to bring more interest rate of return for both our members and cities. It protects the benefit. It preserves the benefit. Everybody see what I'm talking about there? I want to talk real quickly about your benefit structure, and I think everybody knows how this benefit structure works. Everything here is what we provide as a system. You have all the benefits in place. All the employees contribute 7% of their salary for retirement. You, as this entity, match it at two to one. You have five-year vesting and survivor benefits for your employees. You have eligibility of age 60 and five-year service, or 25 years, any age. You have a time credit provision with military or any other previous public service called restricted. You have a death benefit for your employees in place through TMRS. You have updated service credits, which update them based on salaries through their career. And you provide COLAs. So you basically have everything we offer as a system. There's one benefit you don't have, which you could adopt and look at. We have a provision called 20 years, any age. So you could look at reducing the requirement from 25 years to 20. That is an optional provision we allow cities to adopt. You could look at it and adopt it any month. We provide you the cost, whatever it might be, that that can lower the requirement from 25 to 20. I'm going to stop here. Do you have any questions how that provision works?
Is there a cost difference?
Sure.
It goes down, right, David?
I wish.
And if it goes down, moving on.
Let's talk about going down. Well, your rate from last year to this year actually went down. And I think I put it up there in the line item, did I not? Your rate dropped a little bit from 16 to 15. Why is that? Well, you hit all the factors in place, all the actuarial methodology adjustments we had and assumed. So you did have a slight rate reduction. I could go back and look and provide you what the cost would be to adopt 20 years, any age. It's not very much. I don't know off the top of my head, but I'll get it for you. That's not a problem. Again, why is there a cost for this? Well, if you lower the requirement from 25 to 20, that could have many of your employees retire sooner than later. But the benefit is based on the money they have in the plan. I'll give you an example. If you had a police officer work here 25 years and retire, his benefit's going to be higher than working 20 years and retire. Why is that? That's five years less money, five years less interest, five years less matching, and he's five years younger. It makes a difference. Why would a city adopt 20-year retirement? I get this question all the time. It's for recruitment and retention purposes. I hear this all the time, to be competitive with other cities, they have that 20-year provision in place. It doesn't mean they're going to retire at 20, but it's in place for that recruitment and retention asset.
Would it put Pleasanton in the echelon of all the cities that are part of the TMRS system? If the council decided to consider that, would it put us in the upper 5% as far as the benefit is concerned?
Well, if the city did adopt this 20-year retirement, you basically have all the benefits that all my metroplex cities or San Antonio, or all my Houston-area cities have. But there's a reason why they haven't. You know this, Bruce, because they're constantly recruiting and competing for employees. My rural cities, which I would consider a city like this that's outside the city limits, really do it for recruitment. That's where I see it.
Because they see their employees leaving and going to the major metropolitan areas.
Correct. And that could be twofold. The metropolitan areas are a little bit different because of salary structure and benefit structure. But that's typical of everything around the metroplex Houston area, or even the San Antonio area, so.
I will say this, Mayor and Council. In the last 12 to 15 years, we have spent thousands and thousands of dollars on training people. A lot of the folks in the public safety area and public works as far as water and wastewater licenses, and they repeatedly went to big cities.
Right. I got two questions.
That's fact.
Because we don't want to go too much into it, since we don't know the cost. But as soon as we do, and if the employees would like to see that, that's something I think we should probably look at. I had a question. Mr. Wood asked, if somebody quits early, what happens?
Say it again. Sorry, Mayor.
Somebody works here for 10 years and goes to work someplace else, not for a city. Their benefit just stays until they can access it, right?
Let's talk about it. Once an employee becomes vested, they earn a right to receive a pension, which is five years. They have a choice to leave the money in the system. If they continue to leave it in the system, it will continue to earn interest, it will continue to grow. The city will still match it at two to one. That's part of the liability and cost to the city. That employee would have to wait to age 60 if he never returns to public service. What do I mean by that? A city, a county, a school district, a state here in Texas, then they would have to wait to age 60 to begin the benefit.
But basically, the retirement is the same, I mean, as far as...
You always have to meet the qualification.
Right. Okay. What was the other question?
I got one more that he brought up. If he's not working for us, entity, say, can he still contribute to this?
No. That's a good point. The only way an employee can put money into the system, they got to be on a city payroll. This is not like a 401K-type plan in the oil fields, where you can put money in, or an IRA, where you can do it on your own, called an individual retirement account. The only way an employee can put money into the system, they got to be on a city payroll. They got to be contributing out of their paycheck, which is 7% tax-deferred, 26 pay periods a year. I'm going to elaborate on your first question. Let's say an employee works here 10 years, leaves, and refunds their account, which I see happen all the time. They could care less about pension, they want their money. If they refund their account, they only receive their contributions and interest. They walk away from the two-to-one match. You, as an entity, you, as a city, have funded that benefit for that 10 years. A mayor asked me the other day, we need to send it back to me so I can pave a road. It doesn't work that way, Mayor. It is there. No offense, Mayor, I wouldn't lie to you, but it's there. I don't know what... I won't tell you the city. It is there to fund the next person that's eligible to retire, the next person that becomes closer to being invested. It becomes an actuarial asset. And that could have been the case this year with your rate dropping. Our goal is to keep these rates stable, and keep them flat, and reduce them for our cities. We're going to reduce these rates and keep them flat, but we want to increase your assets and reduce your liability. That's the whole point of actuarial methodology, and that's the whole point of how we're diversifying our investments. That's key to us as a system.
Okay. I say we charge Mr. Pearson was finding out that's something employees would like to look at, and if so, then get back with him on the cost.
I'd be more than happy to do that. I do have one question for David, too. David, last year, you suggested that in these unusual economic opportunities, such as Pleasanton is in right now with this economic expansion, that the council could elect to pay down the contribution with some cash. Could you provide some figures for that, too, if they want to consider it?
And what Bruce is talking about is, many of my cities this year received significant rate increases across the board. The system itself and funding methodology, everything in place that I just talked about. Many of my cities are going to sweep money at the end of your budgets into the pension plan. Why are they doing that? It goes directly to unfunded liability. Am I not talking loud enough? I already used up the speaker, not good. It goes directly towards your unfunded liability and increases your funding ratio that much quicker. You can do that as an entity. We've made changes in our statute about two or three legislative sessions ago to allow our cities to do that. This is my suggestion before you even look at it. Let me have our in-house actuary run you the numbers. That's why we hired her, that's why she's in place. If you want to give me dollars of what you want to do, we'll do it. You know, that's no problem as you, as a city. You tell me what you want to do. Economically, this is probably a perfect time to do it.
If you guys give us some direction, we'll ask for those figures, too, at the same time with the 20-year.
Need to be formal, or can we just do it now?
You can do it now.
Okay.
And actually, this money can be swept in at any time. My suggestion, if you're going to do this, do it before December 31st. I need that money. I say "me," not David Rodriguez. I would like that. That'd be perfect.
If we do it, will we see you?
I've been here 18 years.
Next year, Rock.
I'd be in Mexico. Okay? I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I'm working towards retirement, Bruce, just like you, buddy. Do it before December 31st.
We can move on it. That's not anything that we need to delay, so.
No, it's not a problem. I got a few more slides. I want to give you a quick, quick update on Gatsby regulations that are coming through. All these Gatsby regs, we have all our cities prepared for, and it actually separates the pension liability from the reporting standards. All aspects of this benefit has nothing... This change has nothing to do with funding. Remember I talked about actuarial funding? That is already in place. This is strictly Gatsby 68 reporting standards, all right? What is the difference in the financial statement? And it's talked about here. It separates the liability number, the actual liability number, into a net pension liability number. 68 was really created because a lot of those public pension plans out there are not funding the benefit. We see it all the time. This is what we're hearing, why Gatsby created these standards. Our cities are in a different position, I told you, because we have that sound methodology in place. But it just separates those numbers, the financial reporting numbers and the funding numbers. It's not going to change your actuarial cost, just simply how the net pension liability is going to be reported. This gives you a quick definition of how it works, how it differs, all right? Is there volatility in these numbers? Could there be volatility in this net pension liability number? Sure. It depends strictly on the performance of the assets at that time. Well, what are the assets, what you fund as an entity, as a city, to us, and what we do in investments? Our investments have been very, very consistent. This is not a quick fix for us. Somebody told me the other day, well, you guys have a lot of money in the market, the market dropped 200 points. This happened last week. Well, it went up 200 points the following day. Everybody seen how the market's going lately? There's a lot of volatility there. Well, when the market went up the second day, we made money as a system, because we're very, very large. We can ride this wave in the market. It's not a quick fix for us. These reporting numbers will not affect the funding side. We're going to provide a lot of data. This talks about the SOC audit we're going to provide. All this is going to be provided to our cities. It's pretty self-explanatory. It's available on our web portal. So any data our cities need will be provided for them specifically. Gatsby data is also indicated here. Any documented letter, we are going to provide both your external auditor, specifically what those Gatsby reporting numbers are. We provide two letters now, a rate letter, which we already have available to our cities, and then the second Gatsby letter, which will be completed by July. What are our city responsibilities? City responsibilities are user controls, making sure the payroll's correct, you're rolling the right employees, the salary structure is correct. I'd heard about technology tonight. Well, you got all that technology in place to monitor all this. Our cities really keep this user control entity in place. Don't worry. They know exactly what to do in enrolling, specifically payroll data, everything for our employees completely. Some of the other entity controls include census data, making sure that census data is correct. Your auditor, external auditor, is going to ask for information. These external auditors are aware of what's happening with Gatsby 68, what's occurring with the reporting numbers. So any data your auditor asks for, I know Bruce would be calling me, we'll provide it. Whatever you need specifically, we have our cities prepared for this. Any letter, anything else you need from us, just let us know. Get in contact with us. I went through that very quickly, sorry.
No, no, that's good. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
All right, thank you all. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, David.
Item number seven is presentation of TML, under Governmental Risk Pool Benefits for the City of Pleasanton, Mr. Minos.
Mayor, council members, hope everyone's doing well. Thank you for inviting me to give the 2015/2016 renewal summary for this year. I'm actually the benefit service specialist who works specifically with the city. I'm based out of San Antonio. Our office is in Austin, of course. Every spring, well, late spring, in April, our Board of Directors meets to look at the renewal cycle, which begins in September and runs through August. You're actually in October 1st renewal, and that's when they look at the numbers for the past year for every individual group, as well as the pool as a whole. One of the benefits of being with a pool, of course, is that every year, they look at member equity and decide whether they're going to have member equity to go towards any potential rate increases for our groups on their anniversary date. And this year, the city had 95.45% loss ratios. If you'll look at the graph down below, the small graph, the average for the pool was at 92.42%. Let me explain to you what the loss ratios are. It's basically claims versus premiums. And we recommend if the group has 85% or lower loss ratios, that means that they're doing well, so they are below what they're paying in premiums. The pool in average was at 92.42%. The city was slightly over that at 95.45%. However, with our Board of Directors, they look every year, like I mentioned, and decide whether or not they're going to use member equity. This year, they did a rate stability benefit adjustment of $5,980,000. And if you were in the private industry, you probably would have experienced double-digit rate increase, but you're going to receive a 5% rate increase, even though you were above, slightly above, the loss ratios. And that is for medical. Under the dental, they look at the utilization for the pool as a whole, not independently. And the city will experience a 7% increase on dental, and that was statewide for the pool. So when you're speaking dental, that's going to be just a couple of dollars increase, because it's a lower rate. So any questions on the increase itself?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next page, which is our Patient Protection Affordable Care Act. We are 100% compliant with PAPACA, and we are still going to continue the health care reform support and fee payments, because currently, we pay per the covered individual fees required by PAPACA. We pay those every year on behalf of our membership. We're also going to continue to provide the exchange notifications to employees, specifically new hires. We also are going to continue the summary and benefits and coverage for each employee at renewal. As you know, the prohibition on pre-existing was lifted a couple of years ago, and that's[1638.32] gonna, that's gonna remain. Lifetime maxes, we used to have a $2 million lifetime maximum. That was also lifted about three years ago due to healthcare reform. We now have probably close to a dozen individuals in the pool that have exceeded that $2 million mark because of the prohibition on lifetime maximums. We expanded no-cost wellness due to healthcare reform. We also, if you are looking at coverage based on what the city has itself, we do offer the minimum essential benefits and coverage required by PAPCA. We're also now providing electronic payment to providers. We are transitioning to a new online enrollment system, which the city did transition to last year. We're offering guidance under the W-2 reporting requirements for the measurement period under the pay or play requirements through PAPCA, and we're also still continuing our accreditation through NCQA. Under the expanded benefits, this past year, the city, under the wellness program that we have, we offer a healthy initiative plan where we actually pay the member $150 for completing their healthy initiatives. Whereas 2013, which was their first year with TML, we had 10 participants, and last year, that doubled to 20 participants. We're hoping this year that we'll have more participate. What helped last year, I believe, is actually having somebody come on site, and they actually provided all of the screenings, although it does require that they actually go visit a physician and try to expand the wellness in that, in that aspect. So hopefully this year, we can expand that number with the city employees. And Teladoc, we're also gonna continue that, but we're transitioning to a new vendor called Healthiest You. We also launched a new mobile app for employees so that they can have access to anything that they need off of their, their mobile. Questions?
Two points. On the initiatives health plan, I just wanna say that in many corporations, what happens is you have to pay an extra $10 a month, medical, towards your insurance, when you don't do this. And this reverses it. This is paying our staff an extra $150 for going through these biometrics and, and helping you learn how to be more healthy. So, you know, we're leaving money on the table, so we gotta do a better job of getting out to our staff, our associates, and let them know the importance of this, and how in many other corporations, this is upside down, and they actually make you pay more money if you don't do it. So I think that, that is a very relevant point. The second thing that I'm, just need a little clarification on the Teladoc. I know that the Medical Association of Texas, about two or three months ago, came out with a, a ruling or a edict that said, "You must first go to the medical doctor with a physician's visit before you are allowed to use the telemedicine." Is that, is that information getting out, or is that wheeling in this at all?
Well, what it was, was to be able to have the face-to-face visit with the Teladoc. You can still do the Teladoc over the phone, but not the face-to-face. And what I heard, as far as the legislation, is that that has still not been decided upon yet. But we do, we are aware of it, and right now, what they're not offering here in Texas is the, the visual, the Teladoc over the, what they call face-to-face.
Okay.
Right. And that was an excellent point that you brought up, as far as the percentages, if you do not go through the wellness, because we do have some groups that are actually stating to the employees that, at the end of the year, if, let's say, for example, once they have the renewal, they will pay up to 90, 95% of the premium. That's depending on the, on the employer, of course. And if they complete the healthy initiatives plan, at the end of the year, they get reimbursed for that amount. That was the difference.
Yeah, it's, it's much better to be-
Employers are doing some really creative things now, and they're able to assist with that.
Well, wellness is a big issue. That's, that's the big driving force in healthcare now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mayor, I'd just like to add that Joe has brought a level of service to our employees that he should be congratulated for. He's not just a voice on the other end of the phone. He's here at least three times a year to meet with Mrs. Lozano, and obviously will be meeting with Martina Snell, Rodriguez, and so forth. That's the second, that's just, that's the second time, I'm sorry. And I, I wanna add, he did briefly touch on it, but for the first time, we've had wellness programs come to the city where employees can get complete blood workups, where employees can get vitamin shots. It's been attractive with some of the employees to get the Slim shot that helps exhaust the body of toxins and those types of things. And, and Joe, I congratulate you, and I want to recognize you for not just being a representative, but being a partner of the city, and more importantly, a partner for the city employees. We had, in the first wellness, it went on till 1 o'clock. I mean, everybody, almost 100% participation, and, and Joe, we thank you for being a good partner to this city.
Thank you. Kudos to, to your staff, doing an excellent job.
Mr. Mayor, just one other question. Are we gonna still have the biometric screenings on-site, or, 'cause if not, then it's something I think we should consider.
Is, my understanding that we will. We just need to move forward with the scheduling.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
The gentleman has even been back for, for vitamin injections even beyond the biometric screening.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minos.
Thank you, Joe.
Item number eight is discussion action to accept a voluntary annexation petition for a 97.17 acre tract of land in Pleasant Independent School District consisting of 27.44 acres out of the, how do you say that?
Mayor, I'll just say that the voluntary-
I don't know, how do you say that name?
Gehazel.
Gehazel, Van Norman survey, 891 abstract 870, and 62.73 acres out of the Carlos Espalier survey, 1553 abstract 221, Escocia County, Texas. And you do, uh, let's see, you're recommending to accept?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. The voluntary annexation petition letter from the superintendent and the board president in front of you, we're just recommending that you accept the voluntary annexation petition.
Good.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best.
I move to accept the voluntary annexation petition of a 90.17 acre tract of land by the Pleasant Independent School District consisting of 27.44 acres out of the Gehazel Van Norman survey, 891 abstract 870, and 62.73 acres out of the Carlos Espalier survey, 1553 abstract 221, Atascosa County, Texas.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the voluntary annexation petition of a 97.17 acre tract of land in Pleasant Independent School District consisting of 27.44 acres out of the Gehazel Van Norman survey, 891 abstract 870, and 62.73 acres out of the Carlos Espalier survey, 1553 abstract 221, Escocia County, Texas. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. Those in favor, motion please raise your right hand. Post same sign, motion carries. Item number nine is discussion action to direct the city staff to bring an annexation ordinance before the city council for consideration of 97.17 acre tract of land by the Pleasant Independent School District consisting of 27.44 acres out of the Gehazel Van Norman survey, 891 abstract 870, and 62.73 acres out of the Carlos Espalier survey, 1553 abstract 221, Escocia County, Texas.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best.
I move to direct city staff to bring an annexation ordinance before the city council for consideration of a 90.17 acre tract of land by the Pleasant Independent School District consisting of 27.44 acres out of the Gehazel Van Norman survey, 891 abstract 870, and 62.73 acres out of the Carlos Espalier survey, 1553 abstract 221, Atascosa County, Texas.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct the city staff to bring an annexation ordinance before the city council for consideration of a 90.17 acre tract of land by Pleasant Independent School District consisting of 27.44 acres out of the Gehazel Van Norman survey, 891, and abstract 870, and 62.73 acres out of the Carlos Espalier survey, 1553 abstract 221, Escocia County, Texas. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item number 10 is ordinance resolutions. A is a first reading of ordinance number 15-1146, annexing a 90.17 acre tract of land consisting of 27.44 acres out of the Gehazel Van Norman survey, 891 abstract 870, 62.73 acres out of the Carlos Espalier survey, 1553 abstract 221, Escocia County, Texas. Ordinance number 15-1146, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pleasant, Texas, annexing a hereafter described property, a 97.11 acre tract of land consisting of 27.44 acres out of the Gehazel Van Norman survey, 891 abstract 870, 62.73 acres out of the Carlos Espalier survey, 1553 abstract 221, Escocia County, Texas, to the city of Pleasant, Texas, Atascosa County, Texas, and extending the boundary limits of said city so as to include said hereafter described property within said city limits and granting to all the inhabitants in said properties all the rights and privileges of other citizens, and binding said inhabitants to all the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of said city and adopting a service plan. Jeez. Item number 11 is departmental reports.
Our director's report will be followed this evening, Mayor, by a fire department report by Lieutenant Murray, and will proceed to that point with the manager's and mayor's message. All other departmental reports are as submitted.
Excuse me, council mayor.
Excuse me.
Our utilities department crews continue replacing the water service on, on Windship Road. The Jimsey well is still down for repairs. The well was televised by Waterwell Services, and the casing had several feet of sand infiltration and scaling. They, they jetted and removed this buildup, and have also found some, several holes on the, on four of the pipe collar joints. These pipe joints have been ordered and will be replaced as soon as we receive them. On our water main project, Tuesday, we received the remaining order of the pipe fittings and accessories. We received and unloaded six truckloads of 16-inch pipe at our Northtown Water Plant. The, the pipe had been shipped out of Wharton, just outside of Houston. Several, several of the trucks were delayed due to the flooding in Victoria. As of today, we have received and unloaded 18 of the 19 truckloads we were expecting. The waterline project is scheduled to begin as soon as Windship project is complete, approximately two weeks. We're, we're in the process of getting locates and everything set up for that, for that start date. Fonseca Construction completed its finals, its final bore on Highway 97, and then Landmark, our water tower, water tower contractor continues the welding and fabricating of the new water tank. They are also proposing the tank will be complete in approximately four weeks. At that point, the painting crew will move in to do the painting and set up the deco. The street department crew continues mowing the rightaways and removing the trees. They have worked diligently trying to complete a backlog of service orders generated from past storms. Parks department crews mowed ballfields on Sports Complex in River Park. They have also the pecan orchard, pear orchard, maintenance of the landscape at City Hall, Civic Center, and the police department. And then the crews continue the maintenance of Riverbank with that side boom cutter, and maintenance and upkeep of the wooden playground. That completes my report for now.
Any questions for Mr. Weezer? Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you.
Lieutenant?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Lieutenant Murray with Pleasant Fire Department, I'm here to give the report. We had a total of 43 calls that we responded to. Manpower was 220, and manpower hours was 256. The department also sponsored our annual Jaws of Life training rescue class. 60 students were in attendance. The department went to Charlotte for a career there at the elementary. We visited some, we visited some 75 students and discussed what it takes to be a firefighter. We also assisted the high school students with two other projects, one with a photo drop using the ladder truck, and the second one was a rocket launch. Any questions?
Questions for lieutenant? Thank you, lieutenant.
Thank you, lieutenant.
Item number 12, city manager's message.
Mayor, we're working with Tex dot aviation for approval to place the fire station on airport property. We were going through an appraisal process of what the fair market value of leasing that property is. We continue to work with Tex dot aviation on that. We hope to have that appraisal ready in the next four weeks to move back towards Tex dot aviation. Our airport layout plan is in front of you all this evening. It's an amendment to the contract that began with the feasibility study for the runway. A layout plan is chronicled later on, is essentially a master plan for the airport. How will the airport be developed? Taxiways, runways, future hangar space, and so on. That was directed to us about three and a half months ago by the council to bring a contract acceptable. I have asked the mayor to recruit, to review that contract amendment, and appreciate his input on that. Our first Cronus payroll was processed this morning, and it took about three hours. We had some things we had to straighten out with about 60 accounts, there were a couple of other programming things. The actual process of downloading and processing payroll took about two hours, we think, once Mrs. Rodriguez and Mrs. Bandy and Mrs. Lozano primarily are accustomed to it, and I think they all agree that it's gonna take about an hour and a half to process payroll, as opposed to 10 hours. That doesn't include the time spent by the department heads. We're very, very happy about it. There'll be a public information forum, I believe it is, next week. Letters have been sent to all the residents and businesses along the way of Windship, High Meadow, and Cynthia about the street reconstruction program and when the construction will begin. So all those folks have, are in receipt of letters, or shortly will be in receipt of letters. I think they were mailed out about two days ago. We had a number of discussions with some of the council members that have recently come on. I had a discussion with the mayor about our utility rates. I've had a discussion as a result of those meetings with Mrs. Marshall, our rate study consultant. Right now, we're scheduling her here for August 6th to give a presentation to the council once again on how the rates were derived, or how we arrived at the rates for last year, and what all was involved in her study, how many years she went back and studied usage, studied expenses. So hopefully, we can bring everyone back up to speed, and certainly, the new council members can, can hear from Mrs. Marshall. That's our manager's message this evening, Mayor.
Questions for Mr. Pearson?
Move on to item number 13, is mayor's message and announcements. Mr. Pearson, I guess you told me about this about a week ago? Do you know when this came out? I don't see a-
I think it's been in the last month.
It's the Texas Business Journal. It's an article that Mr. Pearson came across, and he asked me to read it, and it's a smaller "Support Companies Tightening But Not Folding," is the name of it. It's by Mr. Sergio Chapa. And it says, "Crude oil prices have hit six-year lows, but the sky's not falling an eagle for a shell. All those companies like Schlumberger, Baker Hughes, and Halliburton have laid off hundreds of workers. They are staying in the region where they continue to extract oil and natural gas at record production levels. The same is true for smaller companies such as DHW Well Service Incorporated in Victoria and Oil Trucking Solutions in Pierceville. Both companies report layoffs, but they're still in business. Although many companies are tightening their belts amid the low crude oil prices, others are using the downturn as an opportunity to expand. Hands down, the winner of the downturn has been Pleasanton, where companies continue to build new facilities. The city's reliable water and infrastructure are a winning combination, along with geographic location along major highways. Companies such as Lufkin Industries, Performance Wellhead, and Frac Components, and Conquest Completion Services LLC are among those expanding their presence in Pleasanton. Justin Dodd with the Dallas-based NRG Realty Group LLC said Pleasanton remains a hot market." And this is a quote from him, "There's still demand with companies coming in, and no companies are leaving," he said. Dodd said, "Real estate prices have not tracked with the downturn trend of oil prices, but whether the trend has lasted beyond, or depends on how long the oil market downturn lasts." Regardless, Dodd said, "The summer will present an opportunity for buyers and tenants." This is another quote from him. "Pleasanton is definitely the hotspot," he said. "If you're not in Pleasanton, you're near it, or north of it." The downturn is also providing to be a time for technology innovations and improving efficiency. Companies that do so have become winners in the downturn." Mr. Pearson thought that was appropriate, a little pat on the back for our city. Alright, we'll move on to item number 14, is discussion action to direct the city staff to enter in a contract amendment with Garber USA to develop an airport layout plan for the city of Pleasanton Municipal Airport.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hall?
I'd like to make a motion to direct the city staff to enter into a contract amendment with Garber USA to develop an airport layout plan for the city of Pleasanton Municipal Airport.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct the city staff to enter into a contract amendment with Garber USA to develop an airport layout plan for the city of Pleasanton Municipal Airport. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign, motion carries. Regular session of June 18th, 2015 is hereby recess pursuant of an executive session, Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, as it pertains to deliberation on real property, 551.072. Executive session matters may be discussed and acted upon if appropriate in open session. Time is 6:43 PM. The regular session of June 18th, 2015 is hereby reconvened. The time is 6:53 PM. Item number 18 is discussion of possible action to clear the sale of right-of-way in the 100th block of Main Street.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hall?
I'd like to make a motion to direct the city staff to proceed forward concerning the possible sale of the city right-of-way in the 1,000 block of Main Street here in Pleasanton.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to proceed forward with the sale of the city right-of-way in the 100th block of Main Street. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign, motion carries. Item number 19 is review of the bills. If you have an item you'd like to review, please speak up at this time. If not, item number 20.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Move to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign, motion is adjourned at 6:54 PM.